And we'll open with the pledge allegiance.
Do we have any public comments?
Mr. President, there are no yellow cards.
Thank you. We will move on to our next action item, 2.02, our WCHS block scheduling with Mr. Ryan Russell and Mrs. Musimba Taylor.
Good evening, President Triplet, and I'm going to have to get used to saying that, Dr. Hanson and members of the board. I am here today to present again on block scheduling. What I'd like to do this time is pause in between certain sections to get questions that are connected to that, if that's okay. I also have Dr. Rogers here, who will present the part regarding the Walker Career Center and the impact. We haven't talked a lot about that, and I know that that has come up in a couple of questions. And then after that, we'll still open up the floor for any other questions. So our why still remains the same. I can't reiterate enough that some type of change has to happen. And so much of this plan and proposal is driven by the need to do something different. And when we look at just, when we look at the data, if we want to start talking about testing, if we want to start talking about student engagement, if we want to talk about the opportunities for interventions, if we want to talk about opportunities to advance our students, opportunities to expose our students, we've got to a lot for time in the day. So that centers around our why. So again, active teaching strategies and greater student engagement, that's the top of the list. How our teachers are instructing. What we're asking our students to do is what we mean when we say active teaching strategies. I think the biggest thing that we are hearing from our students is, "I'm bored. Why aren't you doing the work?" But when we find out, or when we talk to those students who are excited, what they share is, "Well, it's engaging. We're doing projects. They had us do this unique thing." And so how do we make that experience the norm and not the exception? And we believe that block scheduling is what would allow for those things to happen. Targeted intervention. Again, we had some responses on our parent surveys, and people talked about, you know, there's pros and cons. But the biggest thing is, yes, we offer intervention, but we offer it almost at a cost. If you can stay after school, then we've got tutoring for you. If you can make it to our bootcamps, then we've got additional help for you. The small number, I mean, we love every time we serve any student, but the small number of students that we are really impacting, when we look at the numbers, really is so low that are we really providing interventions for all? And so again, as we look at block scheduling, that is also a way in which we can build in those interventions, and we're excited about that. And when we say targeted intervention, that's across the board. How do we target those students who have excelled? What does their day look like? Right now, we're almost teaching to the middle. We're providing activities to the middle. And so how do we expand that and we teach at all levels? We believe that block scheduling will do that. Creating a community of collaboration, as we talk to our employers, as we look at our community partners. One of the things I'm going to tell you, our kids have no problem getting jobs. So when I hear adults talk about, "It's hard for me to get a job," our kids have no problem getting jobs. Now, they might bounce from job to job, and when I ask them, "What happened?", a lot of it has to do with working with folks. You know, "I didn't like what was said or how it was said, and I responded." So how do we embed that into the classroom and begin to work at this level with collaboration so that we send them out? Well, we have time to do that within a block schedule. Opportunities for reteach, regular checks for understanding, students able to ask questions, all of that happens, but sometimes it happens in isolation, sometimes it happens, or a lot of the times, it happens when we have time. And we can't continue to allow time to be the reason why we're not providing everything that we can do. It allows for college and career experiences, opportunities for students to lead in their learning. And again, I can't emphasize enough without the constraints of time. Is their learning happening now? Absolutely. Could there be more learning happening now? Absolutely. Does it still require students to actively participate in their learning? Yes, it's required in a 49-minute period. It's going to be required in a 90-minute or 86-minute period. That piece, that's not a thing that we can control. What we can control and what we are believing will happen with a block schedule is that the variety and the resources and the support that we offer will help students be better prepared to actively participate in their learning. So again, our why still remains the same. The why also speaks to the benefits of it as well. And so the Block A, some people are like, "Why Block A?" There's a lot of, there's a lot, if you have looked or researched block scheduling, there's a lot of schedules that are out there. Just in our surrounding areas, there's a lot of schedules. We really believe that this is probably the least invasive, the least confusing, and allows us to do a lot more and keep what students are able to take, how much we're able to offer, pretty much the same in regards to course loads. Again, really what's only changing, and I don't want to say only, I'm using air quoting that, but what's changing is the delivery of the instruction. Students will still have access to the classes that they currently have access to. So again, more time for problem solving, project-based learning, hands-on activities, labs. Labs is really key. We think labs for science, labs for math, labs for arts and performing arts classes, labs across the board allows us to do some of those things that get left off and are the engaging things because of time. So I'm just going to teach you the material. I'd love for you to get hands-on in the material, but time has been a concern and an issue. And so again, benefits allow us to push back into doing those things that we know engage our students. Small group instruction, student-teacher meetings, individualized instruction driven by student data. We look at data, we talk about data, but really taking that data and creating a plan. And then after we create the plan, the hope is that within this block schedule, we can implement that plan based off of what we see. And again, block scheduling allows us for that. Less courses, less transitions. I don't think we can overlook the fact that the physical transitions, having less, you know, helps in a lot of areas, addresses a lot of concerns we have, reduces the amount of time students can be tardy, reduces the opportunities to get into some trouble. That's a big part of it, but the other piece is it allows them to really center in and focus in on a few classes at one time. And for some of our students, that's a significant piece as they're trying to navigate from a math class to a performing arts class to a, you know, an Excel language class. It allows them to really focus in on four classes at a time, helps to decrease the fragments that, and how it's more fragmented now with the seven-period day. Again, that's the same for teachers, too. One of the aha moments for teachers was, "Oh, that means I have less students in a day as well to really focus in on." So I can really pinpoint Jimmy needs this or has this need, and I've got this day that I can really focus in on versus 150-plus students. I don't know who Jimmy is, y'all. I know Jimmy comes up a lot. He came up at the, but I must know a Jimmy somewhere. But yeah, so, but again, the big push or the big conversation is around student fatigue. We see student fatigue now, and we're in 49 minutes. So I don't know that it necessarily has to do with the length of time. I would argue it has to do with what we're asking students to do. And so fatigue can be overcome by the engaging activities. We so busy teaching and engaging, you don't have time to be tired, you know? So again, that comes up, but that's not something that we're absent of now. So I don't know that that is necessarily the best reason to say why we shouldn't. You're going to have to actively participate in your learning in a 49-period, just as much as in a 90-minute period. We also, I mean, there's just a lot of things that we believe, reducing of anxiety, reducing of the workload, more in-class time to do assignments, so less anxiety about the homework. If we do this right, not that homework is going to be nonexistent, but it can be done a little bit differently. Again, homework can become homework. You know, what we didn't finish, not what I, what you didn't finish in class, not what I didn't get to in class. And sometimes that's what we see. So again, way more things that we could talk about, about why we believe that block scheduling is. We recognize and we do acknowledge there's going to be some cons to it. You know, that comes with any instructional model. What we're hoping to do is to get in front of those things and do as much pre-planning, pre-professional development, to get us to a place where if something does happen, we are able and prepared for that. And with anything, we don't expect it to be perfect, but we do plan to adjust when and where necessary. I'll pause there for just a second to see if there's any specific, you guys have board, any board members have any specific questions about any of that?
For the homework, I really like what you're saying about that, because some children, you know, may not have, you know, time after school, you know, they might have to work or they might have to take care of their siblings or something like that, and they run into problems completing their homework. So that's the part that I like, that they will have an opportunity to get some kind of support in the school as far as finishing up. And then also, if they have something that they have questions about or don't understand, that's the part I like.
It's amazing how many times you hear from parents, "The way they mathin' now is not how we math back in the day." You know? And so it's really interesting, too. And so we believe that in-class time, again, not eliminating homework, but making sure that it is in fact homework, you know? And it's material that we've covered before, so that there can be a sense of success. I would argue that a lot of homework doesn't get done because kids don't necessarily understand how to do it, or they may need some additional support, and then some just don't do it. We're not going to be naive to say, you know, some just don't do it.
You're absolutely right. A lot of the methods have changed, and I hear all the time from parents, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't do it this way. Honey, you better pay attention in class, because I don't know this new way of doing things." Absolutely. That would be great. One last thing, when you said that there would be extra support, are you working with the Career Center? I'm so happy to hear that our kids are getting jobs, but I'm also hearing in the community that our kids need to do more practice on completing resumes, filling out the job application, and basically learning how to interview and how to, you know, present themselves, how to come in dressed, how to talk during an interview.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Those things are, I hear the community and businesses saying that they would love, I just was talking to someone this week from downtown that said that they want young people to get more experience in that area.
Absolutely. I think we've got, I don't know how familiar, we've built that into some of our courses, especially our senior-level courses. With our partnership with Employee Indy, we've done a lot more this year than we've done. So I think that is definitely on our radar, and in some of the things, such as the SRT, that resource period, that allot and allows for some more time for that as well. And so that's a great segue into just the student impact overall. We've got additional class time, we've got the reteach, we've got the help from the teachers, we've got the acceleration opportunities for some of our more advanced students. Lessons become less fragmented, projects become less fragmented, students are able to be more engaged and drive the projects that they're doing, more opportunities to collaborate, and it provides the time and space to explore and experience. And so we're looking forward to that opportunity to just do something different. Teacher impact, one of the biggest things, even with our current PD schedule, one of the things that makes our teachers extra happy is the collaboration time that they have with their other peers. And sometimes we discount how valuable that time is, or we just don't have the time. Right now, with our seven-day schedule, there is no way for us to create a common prep time for our teachers. It just can't happen because of the number of classes that we need when those periods are offered. It is very rare, and if it has happened, it was by accident, not on purpose, that you have more than two folks that teach the same subject sharing the same prep. With the additional 40 minutes that we'll have at the each, at the end of each day, that collaboration can happen, that teaming can happen outside of the PD that we offer on our regular extended day. So we're excited about that. Real-time data, real-time interventions, because we're able to plan and then implement more so than we do it on a Wednesday and we're hoping. So that's the exciting part about that. Again, just from the feedback, fewer students daily to focus on provides more opportunity for intentional touch points when we talk about relationships with students and really knowing the students that are in your class. We're hoping that this will help with that, and then provides time to support students at different learning levels. We can't continue to teach to the middle. We've got to really be able to say how we're excelling our accelerator, how we're pushing and growing our students that are in the middle, and so on. So again, the teacher impact is just as powerful, in my opinion, as the student impact. Yes, sir.
Well, there's nobody else here. I think you can hear my voice. I'm pretty loud.
I think we're live.
It's streaming. Oh, it's streaming. I forgot. Yeah, we are streaming. Hi, folks. Anyway, here's the deal. I want to go back to where you were talking about benefits, and you indicated that, a couple of things I wrote down here, about fatigue, and that kind of like, you know, fatigue is not really an issue. I think it would be. I think it's something we need to talk about, because we're going 80 hours, 80 minutes, and these kids all along, up to now, have been going, what, 40, 50 minutes in a class? And that's where the pace is for them, you know? And some of them are burnt out just from that. Now, we're going to go 80 minutes, and let me tell you what happened today, okay? I was going over your charts and all, and I was writing some notes, and a young child came in, a young student came in, and I said, "Hey, you ever heard of block scheduling?" And she said, "Yeah, we did that at the school that I used to go to." And I said, "Well, how did that go? How did that go?" And she said, here's what she told me. She said that the classes were long, and she got fidgety. And she's the kind of person that you got to keep her, you said, "It's not boring." You got to keep their attention and keep them, keep them in their, in a lane. And she said that that was the most difficult thing that she had to do. That was, she had, she's the kind of person that moves around a lot, and she wasn't able to move around a lot. She said it was too long, and she didn't have enough breaks, and so it was just very irritable to her. And I said, "Man, that's pretty interesting." So I thought I'd bring that up, because I'm not sure that kids typically are that disciplined to be able to handle a long stretch. You know, they just don't have the stamina to continue to persevere for a long period of time and stay awake and low and that sort of thing. Staying awake is another thing that I had, where I wrote down that they may fall asleep. And you say that it reduces anxiety. Well, some kids just aren't built to go 80 minutes. Some kids can only go about 30 minutes, and so everybody's different.
Absolutely.
But when she expressed that, I said, "Was that shared with your classes?" And she said, "Yeah, we always talked about how long this was." She never told me that she ever got there. She never told me that she, her pace kept up, and she was able to endure 80 minutes. So I thought I'd throw that out there, because you said fatigue, and I'm, you know...
So to be clear...
When I was, when I was 17 years old, I could play basketball two days and wouldn't stop. I had no problem with fatigue, but I couldn't do that today. And I'm pretty sure some kids weren't built for that kind of a thing when I was coming up young, that there was also some who couldn't play for two days. I think that we're going to have a concern about that, and I'm sure you're really comfortable that fatigue is not going to be an issue, but I just think that that might, that might...
So fatigue is going to be an issue, and if I said that it wasn't going to be an issue, I don't think that that's the issue that should deter us from doing it. Fatigue exists now.
I'm not saying don't do it.
And one of the things that I would say, and the follow-up question I would have asked the young lady is, what did that class look like? Because I'm going to fall asleep if you're teaching me lecture for 80 minutes. And so that's the big piece where we're excited about the PD and the type of strategies that we want to see. And we'll talk a little more about creating a standard protocol that allows for and just requires you to be thinking about how you're engaging the students, because we It's gonna be a challenge for teachers.
I'm sure. I put down, I put down here, "teacher shock."
Absolutely.
They're gonna have some concerns as well.
Absolutely.
As they move through this, because this is gonna be a different pace for them as well. The other thing I had a question about was, how about AP? And you started to talk about the all types of students, but what about AP and Excel students? I didn't see anything in there that talked about, maybe it's in there, I just missed it. But I didn't see anything in there that talked about that because they are, there is a difference between your, I'm gonna say run-the-mill student, but your average student and then your AP student. And how does this process affect the results you're looking for working with them?
So their classes will also be blocked, which in talking to some of our AP and some of our instructors, this allows them to do and go further in depth than they've been able to do in the past. There's a lot of brushing over subject areas and just like, hey, we can't spend a whole bunch of time on this. And so there has been a lot of, I guess you would say, support around that because now we have the time. We have time to actually do writing samples. We actually have time to do practice tests and spend some real-time practice and things of that nature. So again, that doesn't change for them. Those classes don't go away. So I don't know if that answers your question, but again, similar to some of the other classes, now we can really dive into some of our subject areas and really work with the material a little more. We're thinking in a block schedule then in our regular 49 minute period.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm gonna toss a question, not really a question, a comment. And I'm probably gonna do this throughout. I think block scheduling is good, okay? But I have a few things I just want you to think about. You probably already have, but I'm just gonna throw them out there anyway, okay? My husband teaches physics at Franklin Central and they have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday as regular seven-period days and then Thursday, Friday are block days. He says that a lot of times his kids won't think about his class from the time they step out of it on Thursday until they see him again on Monday. So, and those are the bright kids. Those are the kids that have the stamina and the power to do this. And they will just, they will not even look at anything during that time because they're focused on the classes that were previous or they're just not gonna do it like some other kids. But, so I want you to keep that in mind. So even though we say it gives them a break and they can focus on one night, a lot of those kids aren't even going to look at it again anyway until that time. And so there's a long gap. And so I worry a little bit about the kids, because I think we're thinking of Monday, of every other day. So one week they'd have two classes, the next week three classes? Okay. Okay, so...
Short week or something.
So my concern is kids that walk away on, you know, with a day where they have two and they don't come back again and don't... I'm just concerned that, so just keep that in mind. We've gotta find a way to keep those kids engaged on those off-period classes. And he is one that, he gives them a worksheet for the end of the week. He's never given them homework each night. He's always, he gives them a worksheet and says, "Okay, this is due on Friday," because he's always thought if Grandma French is having a 91st birthday and the kids wanna go and they have homework that they have to do that night that was assigned that day, if it's due the next day, he never thought that was fair. He thought they should be able to go to Grandma's birthday and figure out their schedule and work. And that's part of learning. That's part of what college is like. So when you go onto college, you have to be able to figure out your schedule. So he, you know, so he's got it set up where they can do that and they have, and he has to work with them to keep them remembering to do homework every night. So that's just one thing to think about and I'll toss some other ones in there. I don't wanna bog things down right here at the very beginning, but I'm just gonna toss them out as I think about them.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And my comment was, you know, to piggyback on what Howard and Julie had said about the block scheduling. You know, as a retired teacher, I look at the fact that it's going to be up to the strategies that the teachers use in order for this to be successful. Because we know that students only have a certain attention span. And so it's gonna, you know, when I was a teacher, we had to present our lesson plans and the principals would check over our lesson plans. They were aware of what we were doing. And I don't know whether that's the case now, 'cause it's been so many years. In some schools, I hear that they don't have to have lesson plans and that sort of bothers me. I'm like, oh, my gosh, you know? So how will you know if those teachers are engaging those students? I hope that, you know, in the high school, you require lesson plans because that's gonna be the key. You know, project learning, like she, like Julie was saying, is, you know, those students need something to do on the shorter weeks. Project learning, I found, is so awesome. Kids, they get excited because, you know, you can take any subject and you can do project learning. And so there are things that they can work on that's exciting, they can work with their other students. And then when they come back to class, you know, they're able to, you know, engage in the classroom. So I found that project learning was really, really exciting and it really engaged the students, kept them active, kept them awake, kept them involved. And just sort of like our science fair when the kids are young and, you know, they make those little science boards. Oh, they're so excited because they're trying to develop things. So I don't know whether they do it at the high school level, but I know at the elementary and middle school level, they're excited when they do those projects and then their parents can come and see. But in, on the high school level, I think that to keep them from getting bored to, you know, during that time, it's going to be dependent upon that teacher coming up with different things to engage those students, to keep them actively involved. And then I think that it can succeed.
And we're excited. We believe our PD plan will introduce some new strategies for some folks. It will allow folks to get into their toolboxes and pull out the things that they may have done in previous classes. I think it will give them some flexibility and we're hoping that the PD that we have will allow that support around there as well.
I'm gonna throw one more thing in there, sorry. The other thing that I'm thinking of is when they are taking classes and the harder classes like physics, math, sciences, and they have to learn, they need to learn a certain amount. If you throw a lot at them in one day, it's harder to remember it. I mean, world languages would be another example. I went online and just asked pros and cons about block scheduling and I just, I was looking at a lot of things. And some of the teachers were saying they need to have those kids every day for shorter periods of time because just the practice with it every day is what really helps. But I will say, I also saw where some teachers were able to make it work with block scheduling. But I just think, like I said, I'm just gonna keep throwing things out there that we just really need to think about and you probably have. But we just need to remember that some things need, need a little bit, to learn a little bit at a time and have some practice at it. And I know block scheduling, they can get a little bit and have practice during class and have a little bit, but, but I worry too that we need to make sure we get everything done in a semester that we got done.
And I would disagree with that and say, we probably teach way too much now versus combining some different things. As you know, if you dive deep into it, the US teaches way more than most, you know, sometimes less is best and more in depth is better. And so our hope with our PD is that, one, we're gonna reevaluate our curriculum maps and C, how do we combine things? 'Cause the plan is not because you've got what seems like another day attached to one that we just do two days' worth of work. That's not the plan. And that's not, that's where we find block schedule unsuccessful. And so we're hoping that with our protocol, it doesn't look like that. And typically in talking to some of my counterparts, those teachers that are struggling, we've had to work really closely and push into classes and model. And so someone spoke to, how will we track those things? We really, we've already created a feedback form where we're gone in now to begin to look at what's currently happening in the classroom. Because we've got some folks that are doing things very well and we're hoping to use those folks as resources as we expand further. But again, much of this is preparation, preparing, and what that instruction looks like. Were there any question... Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to just probably really make a comment, like with the Walker Career Center, those scholars are already doing like that block schedule. So to me, this kinda streamlines all of our scholars and kinda put them all on kind of the same path. Because those that are doing the block schedule, then they have to transition over to the single schedule. So I've heard it both ways, like the ones that are doing block schedules really don't like coming back over to the high school and now we gotta go back to the regular class. So I think once everybody, and then the ones that are doing single class complain, well, they get to go over there to the block schedule, the Walker Career Center is better. So now everybody kinda will feel like they're on an equal playing field. And I think it will work the more you are receptive to the input and the feedback and implementing that. And the key where I've seen block scheduling be successful and talk to colleagues is the, like, the engagement is gonna be imperative. And one of the most important things is this is preparing them for college.
Absolutely.
Because going to college, you're not getting 45-minute classes. So as we're doing our journeys of graduates, we also have to think, are we preparing them? Because the negative is when they go to college, they're shell-shocked because, oh, my goodness, I gotta send in this class for a block.
Nobody's reminding me every day that I have this homework assignment and things. And so absolutely, I think those are things. I'm interested to see, you know, what students who've never experienced a block, what their response is, teachers as well. Well, there'll be a lot of interesting conversations. Were there any questions about the AB piece here or this schedule at all? I wanted to include it just in case there were.
I guess the only question I have on it is, are we talking seven classes and an SRT or seven classes and an SRT and possible eight classes if they want instead?
So we're talking seven classes and a SRT and even now, students have an opportunity to take extra classes. So they could take them online, they could take them in night school and things of that nature. So are you asking, can they opt out of SRT and take an eighth class?
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Because as we've been doing the envisioning stuff, it's sounding, and I'm not saying it's happening, but it's sounding like our seniors and our kids that are in there are interested in having more classes that will help them with life skills, you know, taxes.
So that is SRT.
And I know, well, I know. Unless it's like the current freshman class, which is not SRT, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if, if they have more of those types of classes, and like I said, I don't know that that's happening.
Gotcha.
I just know when the kids are talking about being interested in it, the thing that concerns me is that if we add those on, we, it'd be nice if we switched to block scheduling if they had the ability to do some of that. Because I know right now, like when my kids were that age, they would take summer school and take some of their, like their speech and their PE classes and all, all those little required semester classes and stuff. They would get those done so that they could take some electives like music, you know, choir or band or art, if that's what they like or whatever. And I think that's really important because those kids are taking a lot of very hard classes and having that break is nice. And that's for all of our kids, you know? Sometimes it's art that brings our kids to school every day because they...
Absolutely.
You know, that's the one thing. They might have trouble with all the core classes, but the arts what brings them to school or, you know, after-school athletics is another example or music, you know? So I just wanna make sure that we're still...
I think that's absolutely something we can take into consideration.
And if we do block, then if they could do, if we do, and like I said, I don't know because we're so shallow in our envisioning at this point. We're not, nowhere near where we're looking at classes or anything. But, but when kids are talking about wanting more of that kinda stuff, I just want to make sure if we do it, that we have a way to make sure these kids are still gonna have the opportunity to get electives because, the fun ones, because that's what brings even our brightest kids to school sometimes too, so.
Thank you. The other piece that I do wanna jump into, 'cause I know, I wanna get Dr. Rogers up here. But please don't forget that we are wanting to shift this in time of our day. And so that's the other thing I haven't talked a lot about, but 7:20 to 2 o'clock. And that 2 o'clock stop allows us to implement that 40-minute additional piece there as well. It still keeps us in compliance with state mandates and all of those things as they are now. Who knows what they'll be tomorrow when we wake up? But as of now, we are still in a good place in terms of those requirements. And then just those other implications, additional lunch period we could place in there, supports and teaming for staff, some other supports and new programs for some of the areas that can happen during the day to support specifically. We are looking at our ML community, so our multi-language learners. And so we're excited about those. We know, and this list was really more so for us to look at some of the areas that, okay, if we make this shift, there's some changes that also have to happen in some of those logistical places and pieces as well.
I'm sorry, I have another question on, on your last slide there too, real quick. We're talking, the prep time for the teachers would be after, after 2 o'clock, right?
2:05.
2:05.
To 2:45.
2:45. So what happens to our kids that are staying after for after-school activities or athletics?
So that's what we're calling our ninth period. And so we actually have a team that is meeting of staff to kinda decide what does that time period look like? The great thing is, is that everybody that is normally there during the day are still there. So we're looking at, for example, for performing arts, there is a request to, okay, if we shift to block, how can we consistently provide those private music lessons that are those instructors that come in? Well, that time period, we're gonna utilize for that. So we really are trying to tap into, what does it look like for each department? What it doesn't look like is that athletics starts at 2 and not at 2:45. So we're looking at tutoring, we're looking at spaces and things. That is not mapped out, but that is definitely in the planning and in the works.
'Cause that's, that's a question I've had asked of me, you know, what are we gonna do with the kids until 2:45?
Yep. So we're planning, we're in the process of planning that.
Like robotics or French club, cross, well, not cross-country, that's athletics.
But cross-country, we'll have, we will have, so we will have a combination of music kids, club kids, student-coach kids. And so that's kind of the question of what does that planning time look like? We know it's not gonna be a blanket study hall. We do feed kids, so right now the plan is that we will start our dinner time at 2 o'clock. So we have that part built in. So that is definitely on our radar. We're hoping to have a pretty good plan. We'd love to use that time to bring in community partners and presenters during that time. And so it could look different each day. And so, yep, so once we have that, we'll definitely share that out as well. But that's kind of our ninth period that we're talking about. So, yep.
Can I ask also, Masimba, before you leave? When Julie was talking about the extracurricular, well, not extracurricular, but your extracurriculars such as music, art and things like that, is it already built into the block schedule? Or is it something that, you know, so if children wanted to take art, if they wanted to take music, I don't understand how with the block scheduling, they can take these extras.
What she's asking is, because if you have art in your, say, so say for example, tomorrow we were to switch to a block schedule. If you currently are taking art, you're gonna take art, you're gonna take art in a blocked period versus that. So it's not that you can't, but the question is, right now, they have seven classes plus an SRT. The question is, can that SRT turn into something else if they're wanting to do some additional classes? And it could potentially, it could potentially turn into that, those things. I think that will be probably a case by case. And then we just have to figure out how do we deliver some of the things that is happening in SRT, like the Zello, like the resume building, like all of those different things? How do those kids who do opt to do or we allow to do a different class, how do they get those pieces as well? So we just have to think about that and think creatively about that. I'm gonna turn it over because I know he has to get back to somewhere and really, y'all have, I got, y'all gotta beat yourselves.
Yeah, I, I got, I know you want...
They in the lobby, so we got a hard stopper, but...
I know you, I know you wanna run. I know you wanna run. I know you wanna run.
I'm not going anywhere. He's gonna present, I'm gonna come back. Yeah, I'm not leaving.
I'll probably forget my question, but go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I wanna stay with this SRT thing.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm sorry, you guys are gonna have to help me out with this thing here, but I don't know what S R T is, or is, it was based on what I saw you, what was in your, one of your charts. And as I'm reading through this, there's an old bunch of stuff going on in S R T. I mean, you know, get academic remediation and enrichment and track administrative progress and get goals and then connect with peers and teachers and, you know, sped, direct support and foster student involvement in clubs and school, you know, so I'm, I'm reading all that and I'm saying, is this a social club? Is this a social thing where they coming together? Because I, I guess my question is, how is this being supervised, this particular block here? And is, is it, can it turn into a social thing where kids are just having a great time?
Every student is assigned a teacher for S R T. So every student is assigned an S R T teacher. So you're not, you report to your teacher. I'm almost thinking, think about a homeroom. On different days, it may be a club day. So if on Tuesdays, we determine is our club day and you are a Stu Co member or you are a robotics member, you know on Tuesdays, you'll have an opportunity during the day to meet with the robotics instructor or, or coach or whatever. So it's not an everyday free-for-all. Set times for like make-up work or make-up tests and things like that, set time. So we're creating a schedule so that you'll know Tuesdays is club days, Fridays is such and such days, you know? So, yep, it's, it's, it's not supposed to be a club.
You said that, you used the right term there, you know, a free-for-all.
Absolutely, not, yes, yes. So we've tried to, there's a lot that we wanna do and we realize we're not gonna be able to do all of that, but we also realize for it to be successful, there's gonna have to be processes for, how do I sign up if I need to go make up a test? How do we monitor that the kids are going where they say they are going, you know? So those things.
Good evening, President Trippland, Superintendent Hanson. Look, I, I'm, I'm here to kind of answer some questions about the Walker Career Center schedule. I, I know we've, we've been on block for years, so it, you know, about sixty percent of our classes, maybe sixty-three percent of our classes currently are running on block. But there are opportunities for our programs to, you know, get on block. First of all, we talk about a lot of our one-hour classes, one-hour classes are all of our, almost all of our business, all of our intro classes, our freshman and sophomore classes are all one-hour right now. And so this will give us an opportunity to get a lot more lab time. So we're, we're excited about that opportunity for those one-hour classes that, it is really hard to do a lab in forty-nine minutes. And really, it's forty-seven minutes in the Career Center and then you have cleanup and we usually cannot get any of our foods labs done on time. They are like, running like crazy to get that done. So, so we're excited about that. That's, that's a pretty standard, that's gonna be exactly like any of the one-hour high school classes, just, just a longer time. What would be different is our two, three and four-hour block classes. And that, the structure is just different, you know? For a two-hour class that is currently a two-hour block, that will have the least impact on the, the, the current A B schedule that we're proposing would have the least impact on that change because they would meet every day. You know, if it's a two-hour block currently, then in the block schedule, they would meet on, as a black day, they would meet period one, and on gold day, they would meet period five. So they would go every day. It's, it's a little bit less in minutes right now because we're picking up the time in the passing periods in our classes. You know, they're going from a hundred and three minutes to eighty-six minutes, but many of our classes take, take a break, usually not on the passing period. So it's, it's not a direct loss, any, any stretch, but it's a very similar schedule to what we're currently doing. And, and that's the majority of our classes, the two-hour block. So if we look at three-hour blocks, that, that's where it gets a little more tricky is because currently, if you're taking a three-hour block in culinary or early childhood, dental, you know, entrepreneurship and ed pro, those are our three-hour blocks, they're a little bit different in terms of when we go to a block schedule, how do we handle that? Because that's a long period of time that you would be in, in the class. And so there's some different ways to handle that. I've got some examples that I can show on the, in two slides here, but basically, we can do it all three in one day, so they can go periods like one, two and three or two, three, four, something like that. And then, you know, on the, on the next day, they wouldn't go to any of our classes, they would go to whatever high school classes they have. Or we can break it up and do a two-block one day and a one-period block the next day. So it just kinda depends on, on what class and, and schedule. And, and I, I've been working with those teachers in these five programs specifically to try and figure out the best fit for each individual program. We do have two classes that would be four-hour blocks at this time, actually, it's three, but cosmetology is a four-hour block and then our construction capstone is a four-hour block. And those would look very similar in the sense that you would go, basically, instead of one period every day in a block schedule, you would go two periods every day in the block schedule. So one, two on the black day and then five, six on the gold day. And you would just go, so basically go half-day every day, like they're currently doing, just, just kind of a tweak in the schedule. And I've got some examples. So, you know, if you look at the two-hour, you know, there's nothing that really changes for a two-hour class versus what we're doing now. Three hours is where it gets a little different. You can see the two different examples of three hours. So up there in the dental, on the black day, you know, they would go two periods and then on the gold day, they would only go one ninety-minute period. But on the other one, for culinary, we would run the black day for three hours one day and then the gold, three hours the next day. And, and really, the reason for culinary would be so that the kids would get to do the restaurant. Right now, if you're in the morning block of culinary, you're not, you're never doing the restaurant actual service, you're just doing the prep work, but you never actually get to run the restaurant. So in this model, our kids actually get to run the restaurant, they prep it, they run it, they clean it, they get to do the whole, whole, whole thing. Once a week, they can run the restaurant from start to finish. So it's actually an improvement for our kids in culinary. So I'm, I'm excited about that opportunity. We used to have kids that really, you know, I wanna run the restaurant, but all I get to do is prep. I, I wanna actually serve, I wanna actually, you know, do that. They never wanna clean up, by the way, but that's a... And then on the four-hour block, the, the Cosmo sections, you know, we, it's very similar to what we're doing now. You know, they're, they're basically taking a half-day, they come in at seven o'clock and leave at eleven, and then they, the next group comes at eleven-thirty and leaves at four, which we, they stay after two hours, they'll stay after two hours in this model as well to get their hours in for the cosmetology license, so.
Can I?
First year and second year, just, just, yeah, there's a two, it's a two-year program, so the first year is in the morning, our advanced classes in the afternoon. And the only thing, other thing I would say is that there are, you'll notice on this, there, there are some classes that are going to run during S R T. They will all be senior classes so that, you know, those kids are, are the ones that probably don't need the, as much of the S R T period because they're seniors. And if, if we do it right for the first three years, hopefully that's, they're the ones that are, and typically, those are the ones that we're sitting on a work-based learning anyway, because these are the capstone classes in the afternoons, that's why they're in the afternoons, so that their schedules, so they can leave our class and go into the community work. So there is a slight, you know, there is some overlap there, but it won't, it's not, it's not a significant number of students.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You know, we're revising our journey of a graduate and I need to find out, have you taken a survey or anything to see how many of our students have been successful in culinary? I know we have someone from Chartwell here, but I mean, these students that graduate, because you know, the cost of living has gone up, it's really hard to try to be independent. And I wanna know, as far as job-wise, have these students been able to obtain jobs that's going to produce enough money to take care of them to be independent? Or are they out there trying to find work? So have you done any kind of survey to find out the success story of these students?
So I don't know if I can speak to culinary specifically, but we do...
Culinary.
Okay, well, I would have to pull the data out, out of the whole data that we have. We are required by law to follow up every student that graduates our programs eighteen months out. It's a student placement data rate. Are they employed, enlisted, enrolled eighteen months out from us? Our state requirement is like a ninety-one percent. This past, the past three years, we've been over ninety-eight percent in terms of emplacement and role, you know, enrollment, enlistment, employment. So I can, I can look at and see if we can pull out the specific culinary numbers. I will also say that culinary, we, we got increased rate of culinary, like pay for the credits because it has moved from the low category to the moderate category of wage because of the push in that industry. It is the, one of the most demanded jobs right now in Marion County. It has one of the highest unemployment rates right now, meaning it has one of the highest rates of job placement because they're desperate for workers. And I, and I understand that that's factoring in low starting wage jobs, but there are also a ton of moderate and high-wage jobs in that field that are not filled, filled right now. So I, I'm sure, if Quill were here, Quill would say, yes, there, hey, snuck in, I guarantee he's struggling with employment, yes, and, and he can't get enough in, in that field as well, so.
The reason I'm asking you is because, you know, we have to look at, you know, the future and look at what's going on now, just like all of a sudden housing just went up. You know, I'm all about, you know, encouraging students to do what they like, but we also have to teach students to not only do what they like, but what is going to support them? I don't want children graduating and still living in poverty, because we have some students that are already in poverty and struggling. I don't want them to graduate and then still live in poverty because, oh, I like to do this, but it's not going to be enough to sustain them and have them to live a decent lifestyle. Will they be able to be in culinary and get a job and be able to pay for this housing and apartment? They told me a two-bedroom apartment is sixteen hundred dollars a month. How much money is, is going to be generated from this career that's gonna help our students be successful? I don't wanna see them in poverty. I know one young lady now, she just had a passion for culinary and it was in our program with Officer Harris. And she graduated and she still don't have a job. She's in poverty, she's struggling, she, she contacted me and said she was depressed. So now I'm trying to suggest that she get some counseling because I don't want her to, you know, think about ending her life in which I feel that, you know, she is very, very depressed at this time. So that's why I'm bringing this up and I'm really concerned because that was her passion. But just because it's your passion, we need to teach students, you have a passion, but you also have to look at what is going to take care of you when you graduate from high school. And she did not take a look at that and now she's struggling. I don't want other students to do the same. So with culinary, we need to, kids, they need to be taught what is going to be best for them. Even though they like it, we as adults need to say, okay, I know you like this, but let's try to think about something to go along with this because guess what? This is where you would be and this is how much it's going to take to take care of you and will this sustain you and give you the lifestyle that you want? They need that. And so hopefully, at the high school level, that's what I'm looking for.
I think we, Dr. Rogers, and I know we're gonna move on past this, this for another topic, but one of the things that's gonna be, we're teaching about entrepreneurship. And in culinary, one of the things that you advance and make more money is teaching that entrepreneurship and how to go out and be inventive in establishing more money. Like my daughter is in culinary and she figured out how to make security boards, a lot of different things. So learning the skill is something that you can get your, we call it a side hustle in, as well as going out and working in jobs that pay, you know, the minimum wage. So we just have to teach our children, our youth, how to build upon their skill and maximize it to the best of their ability. But does anybody have any more questions for Dr. Rogers? Because thank you for your time and it's very important. I know we had a lot of questions about the Walker Career Center and people wondering how the block scheduling would impact that. So I think it's very important that we were able to explain this and give, provide a visual, you know, for that.
Absolutely.
And thank you for the information that you'll be sending to us regarding the culinary for Miss Gloria too.
I just, I, I just wanna, I just wanna commend you also for, 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 for coming on and, and presenting that. As I was going through the charts that I had earlier, I didn't see anything about Walker Career Center and I wrote this, wrote W C C on here and said, where are they? But I'm glad they're here now and you gave us a good presentation.
You're welcome, no problem.
So I know there was questions, really, we brought this at this time because we recognize that if this is something that we shift into for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, we can't wait to begin P D at the start of the school year. And so as we look at this, I think it's important to understand that, and I think we talked about this earlier, it's not so much that we're going to just pile on what we're teaching, there has to be an entire curriculum shift. And so it requires a very intentional shift in our instructional design. And when we say design, we're really talking about how are we presenting the material? How are we teaching our babies? What does the classroom look like? Right now, I can say, we don't have a coherent instructional model. We have a coherent instructional schedule, seven periods a day, et cetera, et cetera. But when you go from class to class, there's not one model that you see. You know, you hear about the I do, we do, you do, you know, that's happening in some classes, you know? So our goal with the curriculum shift is to also be very intentional about how we are expecting our teachers to implement their instruction. And what that looks like is, is everybody gonna be on the same page, using the exact same activity? Absolutely not. But we want to create a toolbox of appropriate instructional strategies that can be used at different points in a blocked schedule. So the emphasis that we are wanting to put on our P D is around instructional strategies. And so some of it is going back to good old days of, like you said, project-based learning on a regular, sharing, you know, collaboration, small group work, you know, board work, a little bit of lecture. I have to say, lecture's not going away, but it's gonna happen in an appropriate amount of time with some very intentional stopping for questions, checking for understanding, assessing where the students are. And within a block schedule, we can do that. So we are working closely with Kate Schwartz and her team to, one, refresh the syllabus that we have out there currently and that we're using, really looking at the pacing guide so we don't mess up and try to teach too much or even too little during that time. How do we acknowledge and make sure we're getting the essential questions answered? And then again, the how, the instructional strategies and the tools that we're asking first to use. And so our proposed professional plan that we have, there's a critical need, that was the biggest feedback, how are we gonna prepare for this? What does it look like? So there's a critical need for staff development and modification of our teacher practices. We've created a proposed spring P D plan. Within that, some things that we already started in our quest for looking at and finding the best model within block to use was a book study. So we'll continue with that, just constantly immersing our staff and ourselves in what is research saying, what are those best practices that are out there? We wanna allocate time for staff during the day to collaborate and update the current curriculum and we feel we can do that in our P D schedule. That was the biggest thing. Now I gotta rewrite? No, we're not rewriting, we keep saying, we're just looking at how we are delivering the instruction. So the standards and the skills are still there, like those don't change because we went to block. But how are we teaching those and what and when and where does that fit on our pacing guide currently? We're asking that we are able, at least for this semester, to veer a little bit away from what we have in place currently for e-learning days. We're, they're already on standby to allow definitely every one of our department chairs and a few teacher representatives to actually go in and push into some of our surrounding schools that have block schedules just to observe what is happening and be able to talk to some colleagues. to some colleagues who are living it right now. And so there's been, we're excited to do that, and so we'd like to build in that within our e-learning days. We also want to build in some intentional learning of certain strategies that we want to see and would expect to see, project-based learning, small group, data-driven instruction. I put effective questioning, you know, you know, I asked them if they understood, and what do most kids do? That's not the right question to ask. And so effective questioning is what we are. So these are some of the hot topics that we want to immerse our staff in with PD and being intentional. And then, like I said, observation of other schools and block schedules. Again, our MIC partners have said, absolutely, come on out and look at it. And I think it's gonna be great to get firsthand exposure to what it could look like and what it is. And what I'll tell you, they're not holding, they're not holding back and telling what doesn't work. Lawrence Township have made some shifts. They used to have everybody, their SRT was a study hall, they got rid of that because it was a free-for-all, and it, you know, wasn't as structured. So when we hear that, we're like, okay, okay, so that's something we need to be thinking about with processes. Key players is everybody, but specifically making sure that our department chairs are able to lead. There's some additional training. How do you give feedback to a teacher who's struggling in a block schedule? So that PD for them is going to be some of the same that teachers are doing, but very intentional about how do we deliver appropriate feedback? How do we address the teacher that's struggling in the classroom based off of what we've seen or what students are saying? Again, those common planning group leaders that would come out of that, what does that collaboration look like? And then we may need to identify some additional instructional leaders within our building that are specifically there to support in addition to some of the folks we already have, because we're gonna have some champions of this. We got some folks that are really excited, and we want to utilize those champions to support other folks. And so that's what we're excited about. You know, we gotta warnize everything that we do. So we've got what we're calling the warrior protocol or instructional design, meaning at any point in time when you walk into a classroom, we're saying to a teacher that these components are there. When you walk into a block period, we're asking, how will you welcome and warm up your, your students for that block? How are you preparing them for what's going to happen? Is that, that's kind of your do-now. What does that do-now look like? Is it very intentional? Is it, is it, you know, it could be a plethora of things, and we want to make sure that those are happening. How will you set your agenda and objective for a block? How do kids know what to expect? Sometimes the anxiety is reduced, just so I know what's coming, coming. If I'm uncomfortable working in groups, I like to know it at the beginning of the period so I can prepare myself mentally. If I'm gonna have to get up and present, I need to prepare myself mentally. So some of that, just like we, when we go into a meeting, we want to know what's on the agenda. And, you know, we all grown when they say group work. But, but seriously, again, that's what we're expecting to see in classes. Review, how will you connect prior block or class learning there? How do you go over, remember yesterday what we did and, and hit on that? Relevant instruction, how are you gonna deliver high-quality relevant instruction? So as we begin to prepare teachers to follow this protocol, what we're planning to do in that PD time is provide, what does a strategy look like under relevant instruction? So they'll be able to pull those things, and we'll be able to practice those things, and we'll be asking to see those things as well. Interactive, how are you gonna engage students to interact in interactive experiences and learning? What does it look like? So we keep saying, almost without saying, that a teacher may make or break this based off of how they instruct. And so again, we want them thinking going into the lesson, how am I getting and engaging Jimmy, who likes to fidget, in an activity? Okay? Ownership, how are you gonna empower students to take ownership and apply their learning? Now that you, they've learned it, or we're hoping that they've learned it, what does that look like? And then how do you verify? How does, how do you know that the lesson that you taught, the question that you were trying to answer, how does that resonate with our students? How will we verify that the learning did take place? And we've called it these things, but this is good, good, good teaching. Do-nows, group work, independent work, exit slips, assessing learnings, stopping and pausing and reflecting. Now, will every single one of these things happen in a lot, in in-depth in every class? Not necessarily, but these are elements that we expect to see at some point in there. When you walk into a classroom, you should be able to see where folks are. You should be able to know exactly what is going. It's more than an agenda, it's a real, it's that lesson plan, it's that have you asked yourself those things? Okay? When we sit down for a post-observation, we've got a blueprint to ask teachers, tell me about the lesson that I saw. I wasn't sure where aim happened. And they could say, well, it was when I did X, Y, X, Y, and Z, or yeah, you're right, I didn't have that in there. Well, what would that have looked like if you had implemented? You know, we gotta turn everything into a question, so, you know, want them to feel supported. But seriously, again, this is what we're missing right now. And this is what we're hoping to bring in with the block schedule, and this will be a huge part of that PD piece. This is very, very generic in the sense that there's not detailed what exactly the strategy that's gonna happen on that day. What we did was try to map out every week that we have coming back from break and how we can utilize it. Once we get the go-ahead, we've built in here where you see in gray, those are days where the teachers are working, and we're gonna provide coverage for their classes to get together and collaborate and do some things. The other days are days that were already PD days that were set for the district. Again, so we're not veering too far off, we're just doing some more intentional, we're asking to do some more intentional pieces there as well, where you say instructional toolbox, that's again is where we're bringing the teams together and talking about best practices specific to foreign language, best practices specific to, you know, science or math or so. So that's where this falls at. We've got e-learning day blank right now because we, we just want to know what leeway we have to adjust that, but we're excited to have those days so that we can bring the staff all together as one and really make sure that everybody's on the same page with what our goal is and what direction we are headed. Questions, comments? All right, let's keep on, go ahead. I heard a.
No, I didn't. I'm glad you weren't done, so I'm gonna wait.
Oh, okay. So we did do the parent survey that you asked about. You'll see on here, I thought it was really interesting that the, in regards to when we asked the question of both staff and parents about how do you feel about the possibility of moving to a block schedule, there were some similar responses and reactions in regards to those who were optimistic, those who were excited, those who don't know, those who were resistant. And so I just thought that that was just a good side-by-side to have to say that folks are kind of sitting similarly in the same place from, from parents to staff. We put out two surveys, so you'll see occasionally on here, where I have it in Spanish and I have it in English. So we had a total between the two, three hundred and eighty-three total responses there. And again, very similar to what we were seeing across the board in terms of folks that were very familiar with it, somewhat familiar, and we have a handful of folks that are unfamiliar. And so to counter that unfamiliar, we really want to, if we're allowed to do this, provide a resource for how do we support, how do you support your students on a block? Where can I go to, to understand what a student's schedule is? I think we're gonna have to be very intentional about that because there's some folks who, who've never lived a block and block and aren't that familiar. So that was a great feedback to have in regards to what direction we need to go. Within a class, how important is for students to have time to collaborate? Some of these are, as we looked at our why for doing it, the questions were stemmed off of, is this a need that our parents think we have? Do our parents feel like there needs to be more time for collaboration? And again, we've got about half and half in terms of the responses for this in regards to whether folks thought it was important or somewhat important, and a handful that don't think it's necessary. How important is for students to receive regular teacher feedback? And so as you can see, that's ninety-one percent. They want to know how they're doing, they want teachers to be able to respond appropriately and regularly on where their student is, and students to know where they are. How important is for students to have opportunity to ask questions? Again, this was another one, and this came up in a few of our panoramas, not necessarily this past one we did, but in previous years where students were adamant about asking questions and having their questions answered and not really having that time with their teachers. And so that's been huge, and so it was, it was encouraging to see that that was a priority for our families. And how important is it to teachers to have time to reteach material to their students? And parents think that's definitely key, you know? So if my kid doesn't get it, what are you gonna do about it? You know? And so hopefully in that protocol that we have, in the time that we're allotting for it, that can happen as well. Barriers that, they're all over the place, but again, if we look at the barriers that even teachers put in place, they're very similar there. But what would you consider to be a major barrier to students? Forty-one percent say time. Okay? I think, I mean, it's just time is, is definitely of the essence and is, is clearly a key point as well. Student initiative, we are not blind to the fact that sometimes you could stand on your head, twist and turn, bribe as much as you can, some students just, it's hard to get them to engage. So we're not blind to that. So some people are saying, sometimes it's student initiative, and there's a chance that it doesn't matter what we do, you know, to get students engaged. And then, of course, we had staffing on there as well in terms of, do we have enough people in place? And I think we have enough people in place. I think we just have to think differently about how we're using those people and how are we, are we pushing in, are we pulling out, or what does that look like? When do our counselors have access to our students so that they're seeing them more than maybe once or twice? We built that in. Other concerns, I've listed on there as well, there were, those are the, the smaller sections that are on there, just, just a variety of those as well. Benefits, again, similar question that we asked for staff, more time for in-depth teaching, additional time for students to ask and have questions answered, more times for teachers to work with students were our top categories. And so as we, as we look at those things, again, it aligns, in my opinion, to our benefits and to our whys and the impact that we've stated staff will have, or excuse me, block schedule will have on learning for both students and staff. We went over kind of our staff survey response there, we had a great response from there. What was very reassuring was that we have almost half of our staff that have taught in a block schedule, and they don't, and we asked them, we recorded emails, and we know who they are, and so we will be tapping on them to really help us and really support their other colleagues as well with this process. We've got a handful that said they were with the school when they transitioned to block, and so as you can imagine, that, their feedback is going to be very valuable, too, for some of the red flags or some of the things that we may not be thinking about it. And then most of them were familiar at some point, either because they were in block or just that they're familiar with block scheduling. In-depth was important for folks, reduced number of passing periods was significant for folks as well, but opportunities for project-based learning, experimental learning, so those are those labs, those are those projects and activities are very important. Sometimes when you're forced to just do what you have to do, it's not fun. And you say, I've said to my students before, I know, we just gotta get past this part, it may not be fun, but we gotta get past that. I think we are gonna be at a place where we can say, well, you know, let's, let's see what we can do with this particular topic that isn't necessarily one of your most interesting, but how can we dive deeper? How can you make it your own? So those student-led and increased engagement. And then fatigue, like I said, that's a huge concern. We're not, we're not discounting that as being a part, that's a concern for the teachers. And I think, how do we counter that for some and for most is by how we are engaging them in their activities. Our student group reflection, likes, you know, actually, let's just hit the dislikes because the likes are some of the things that we've talked about, but the dislikes, classes felt really long. Okay? So we've got to acknowledge it, it's gonna be long. Schedule was confusing at first, how do we do, and what do we do to support that? Depending on block, there were fewer opportunities for classes. So how do we counter that so that we don't reduce the type of classes or the number of classes? Right now with our model, we have not eliminated any classes. In fact, we may be adding a couple classes just because we have, we see the benefit of doing that within a block. Lots of note-taking during class. So yep, you know, if we're just taking notes, that's a problem. Some teachers would still rush and leave kids, oh, out of the mouth of babies. Some teachers would still rush and leave kids on their own to work rather than helping everyone. So this kid is saying, I wanted my teacher to be up in front and engaging me and asking me to do things versus just letting me go off on my own. So if we still only teach for forty-nine minutes and then the rest of the block is just you working your own, we could've kept forty-nine minutes. And so that's where that warrior protocol comes in place, where we say, because when kids get in trouble, you know, the first question I ask is, what should you have been doing? And you know what most of the answer is? Well, I was done with my work. And you're like, oh, okay, okay, well, what should you? Nothing, you know? So we want to eliminate that as much as possible. Teachers that lecture the whole class, teachers that try to pack too much in one class because of the longer times. So, so our kids are aware that it probably could've worked if this hadn't happened. Having to do work on our device and computer most of the class. So these Chromebooks, we're gonna have to think about how those are, well, how we're using them now, okay? And then we had a couple, we had a few that said, there was nothing that I didn't like. So I thought I'd just put that on there to help sell my point that we need to do block scheduling, you know? I'm not above that, but just so you know. So again, it's not that we're hearing, not hearing these things and we're aware of those things, and they're gonna be present, and we're gonna, we're gonna run into those classes and those students and those struggles. My goal is that we just have a plan, or we sit down and we're able to assess, well, what needs to happen, what needs to look different? You know, what we do first semester of next year, if we're allowed to do block, I assure you it's probably gonna look a little different than what we do second semester. Heck, it may look different from nine weeks to nine weeks depending on, you know, the feedback that we are planning to ask for on a regular. And that's what we have on here is what that feedback looks like. We're going to, we don't want to survey them to death, but we really want to hear, and we need to know if there's a class where there's lecture the whole time. We need to know if there's a class where it's going really well. So if Ms. Jones's class is getting raving reviews and kids are excelling in there, we want to know what Ms. Jones is doing and want to be able to share those things. So the feedback is really for us to drive our next step so that we can get really great at what we do. We want to be intentional about our parents and guardians and giving them a space and a place where they can share their concerns, they can learn what block should look like so that they can advocate for their students, okay? Because we know that this is gonna be a struggle for some of our students. I think it's important to also say that for our students, our exceptional learners, our special needs students, their schedules will still be dictated by their IEP, okay? So it's not that we're going to block, and block just may not be good for some of our students based off their IEP. It may be that they're in a block class, but they get pulled halfway through because eighty-six minutes is extremely too long based off of their particular needs. So we still have that flexibility, you're gonna still see some variety within, within student schedules and what we offer, again, based off of students' needs. That doesn't go away. In fact, I feel like it gives us more opportunities to say, okay, let's let you still engage in our general education classrooms, but then let's also allow you to get the support that you need if it needs to be elsewhere, elsewhere. So we're excited about this, you guys, I'm excited about this. And like I said before, whether this is the change we make, we gonna change somewhere because we gotta continue to push our students to get the results that we need. And we're just not, I'm not satisfied, and I hope you're not satisfied with where we are currently with just the data and where our students are at. I think there's so much more that we can do if we're not confined by a schedule. And so that's what I throw out there. Ryan, all you, sorry.
Before, before Ryan comes, I just want to say this. I am excited now that we are involving, involving staff, students, and parents, and with everybody on board and with your excitement and enthusiasm and hard work towards this, I think that it can be successful. I'm all about change also, and I think that now we have everybody on board and we're ready to go. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, Ms. Simba.
And the other thing, I haven't said this, but we have, like, just, just the other things, our teaching and learning team has been doing this, but as you know, this is a school-wide change. And so our deans and other folks and other roles, support roles, social worker, all of those also, those individuals have been involved in this planning. My question and challenge for them is, how does this impact your area? So for my deans, what looks different? What is a? looks different? What does a passing period look like? So this has been a team effort, I would say. They're probably sick of talking about it, but we're going to continue to talk about it even more so that we can really make sure that we put out a good product for our, for our students as well.
Rachel, you had a question for me earlier.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm going to start with, so the beginning of the year next year, we have that first day for freshmen. So has there been discussions as to making that two days or?
I've not heard about two days or anything for that. I do think that that day will be probably one of the few days where they visit all of their classes that day, just so that they could get around. So we wouldn't run necessarily, we may run a modified block half-day. We're going to have to get really creative with that so that they can really know what that A and B day looks like. But the goal would be to get them comfortable in their environment.
Got it. And have that be, day two kind of be day one? If that makes, I know what I'm trying to say, but just.
So that would be one of those weeks where we'd have A, they would go to A, B twice that week. So, yeah.
The other thing is, and this is kind of a spin-off of what Julie said, I, I think it's important to remember that eight classes is a lot, and we should probably discourage that if not simply flat out not allow it. We moved from a sixth-period day to a seventh-period day to allow those honors diploma kids, et cetera, to have that time to pick up another schedule. You know, college schedules usually max out at six classes, if that, and, and that's a lot. It's usually less. Eight is a ton, and you're going to have honor students that are going to try to fill up. And I, that's a lot of work. And I think that having that SRT, I know that it's different for those half-day classes at the Career Center when we have to worry about things like hours being involved and things like that. But I think that SRT period is incredibly important for all of our students, even those who are going towards the academic honors diploma, having that ability to also have that club time. For students who don't have that option to stay after school, kind of like how we were talking about with tutoring, it's not really open for all. If, if, if that ability for transportation, et cetera, isn't there, that's also true for that club time. How open is it really for everyone to participate in extracurriculars if they can't get a way home? Whereas if we're able to have clubs that don't necessarily need to meet all of the time, so Japanese club, or skateboarding, or German, or chemistry, what, what have you, everyone really truly would have the ability to participate in those. I, I just, I am very concerned about the possibility of opening up that eighth hour for something else. I think we really need to hold firm with seven-hour schedules at most.
Okay, I'm, can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm thinking back, back about my kids, and they would take all those hard classes that they want to take, and they would do that. And they, if they only had seven periods, that's all they would take. And I just, I just really think it's important to have a way for our kids to take some of these other classes. And maybe you say, if you take eight classes, one of them has to be a fun class. Or I don't want to say that performing arts is a fun class and, and doesn't deserve like, what it should be, because it is, but I just.
So I would counter that with my daughter, who is on academics and is taking all AP classes other than two electives every day, which is her fun, that, that time already exists in the schedule that we have for students that are currently there and doing it.
And my concern is, sorry, Rachel, my concern is if we add, if we don't add any other classes that are required, because that's where all of this concern for me comes, is if, it's all from the envisioning that I've been going to and, and listening to the kids because they're wanting more relative thing, more information that's relative to them at a certain level. So having all that stuff in that freshman-level class isn't benefiting them. They want to take the taxes and stuff when they're seniors. I know you're saying SRT, but they're talking, they want to have a class. And if they have a class that has taxes and other things in it that's more appropriate for seniors, or another one for junior, I don't know if it'd be just one other class or whatever, but if you're going to add more classes that are required. Now, if you don't add more classes that are required, I'm fine with that.
So that's what SRT is.
But if you add more, no, if you add more classes that are required, then I just want to make sure they can still take the other classes, the electives that they really want to take, that they would never get, some of our kids never get an opportunity to take an elective class, you know, like, some of our kids can never do, I don't know, art. Maybe they don't, maybe they love doing ceramics. My, my, one of my kids loves ceramics, and she would never get, have gotten that opportunity if she didn't get it at Warren. And if there was another classes added, she might not have been able to get it, if that makes sense. I, I'm just hearing what's being said, and, and it may never happen because I don't know where we're at or what we're going to do. You're, you're thinking SRT, but the kids were talking that they wanted a class. I don't know what, but we don't have block now, so they didn't know that we were considering this. So it's possible, you know, whatever. I just want to make sure that if we're adding on required classes, our kids have a way to be able to still take those elective classes.
But if we add on that class, we would have to vote on that, like to change the diploma requirement. If not given by the state, would be something this board would have to choose to do.
Right.
I cannot imagine a circumstance where I'm like, you know, that 47 credits wasn't enough? I'm going to make it 51. That's insane.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I don't know. I don't know.
But that would be our decision.
I know, I know.
And the other thing to look at is the fact that the way that high school diplomas are currently being looked at, they're going to num, lower number, no, they will be lowering the number of credit requirements, not raising them. That is the constant discussion. Even today, when they were discussing adding a computer science class, part of the conversation was at what expense? What class is being moved? Is it counting as a finance class? Is it counting as a math class? Because the idea of requiring a computer science class as a new plus addition was pretty much thrown out by everyone. And it's part of the reason, right, it's part of the reason that the diploma, from my understanding from what Dr. Jenner said today, it's part of the reason why the diploma is being held, is because they're still trying to figure out what they can cut out and what new requirements they're going to be given, because that same bill changes the diploma again, what new requirements are going to be given, et cetera. And again, once we see what that high school diploma is, which will theoretically be fewer hours, and it will not be more hours, is the one guarantee we've gotten from DOE, the, the thing to remember is, to have another class that would eliminate that would have to be a decision of this board. And, and that becomes a different conversation where this comes in, as to whether that.
I just, I just want us to think about that when we're, you know what, okay, we're not, this is not the debate that we're having tonight. This is about whether we're doing block and, and, and stuff. But I just want to, I was just putting that out there so that you could think about it because I, and when you decide what you want to do, we'll figure it out. But, but I just want to make sure that the electives aren't taken away from a group of kids that might need them, whether they're our AP kids or whether they're our lower-level kids, that that's what brings them in. I just want to make sure that they have that ability. My, my kids took a lot of summer school classes in order to be able to do those electives. And, and if you add more classes, then it makes it harder for them. They ran, they took every class they could as a summer school class. They, they had two every summer, so they couldn't have added any more on. So that's just my thought, my concern.
I can understand what Julie is saying because when I was in college, that's what helped me get through college. I mean, I would take a few difficult classes, but I could not wait to get some fun electives. And that's what kept me motivated, was like, oh, if I can get through these hard classes, then I'm going to do my fun classes. And that's what kept me motivated. So I can understand what she's saying.
And won't go away.
Yeah, I think I can offer this perspective to help just talk about, I get the opportunity to summarize everything Ms. Taylor said in 30 seconds, which is impossible. However, Board, I thank you for your questions that make us think through this process, our staff, our community, and the questions that they've asked us. It just helps us understand the perspectives as we go through. But, but consider this, because here in just 30 seconds, I'm going to ask for your vote to approve the block schedule. Think of block scheduling really just laying the foundation for us to fulfill the promise of JOG. All the conversations that we're having right now are critical, and they are important. And I promise you, those are discussions we bring forward to you at a future date. Remember, JOG represents the key skills and dispositions we want our students to have so they can be successful the day after graduation. Block lays the foundation for that. Your vote of approval tonight helps lay the foundation for some of these future conversations and discussions that we want to have. And we believe that block is absolutely critical in promoting a model for active teaching, greater student engagement, college and career readiness, true college and career readiness, and greater relationships between teachers and students. We've heard, I love hearing the consideration about what envisioning day impacts and what JOG looks like. We have opportunities that we're getting ready to go, or we're in the middle of going through the process of updating and revising those JOG skills and dispositions. And that gives us the opportunity to truly work to make sure our students have meaningful employment, realistic college enrollment, entrepreneurship or enlistment with that. That is our focus. Your vote tonight starts that foundation for us. The details about fatigue, which classes, how many classes and all that, those are opportunities we'll get to engage with you at a future time, because we're excited to share. I, I believe, Julie, we're going to still have that same opportunity regardless of what that looks like. I do believe SRT provides an opportunity that a lot of other brother and sister schools that we've talked to haven't truly refined. And that's going to make us special in our ability to meet the needs of our students. So with that, certainly we can answer questions that you guys have, but I am asking for you guys and your vote of approval for us to move forward with the proposed block schedule starting next school year at Warren Central.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Rachel Burke and second by Julie French. Time for the questions. Any questions at this time?
May I say something? As a parent who had students who were going to school early and staying late, involved with extracurricular and different things, I remember especially senior year for all of my children, the night oil just burning to get all of those homework things done for seven classes when they get home at eight or nine o'clock at night, and seeing them draggy-eyed the next morning with all their homework done, going to bed maybe at 1:30, 2:00, and then getting back up and maybe being at the pool at 5:30 in the morning. I really kind of wished we envisioned this a while ago, because I think we've been putting a lot of fatigue on some of our students who are really trying to enjoy their clubs and do some of the other things and just maybe work or support a family. I think this is really going to be a nice move for our students.
Thank you. Do you have a question before we do the vote?
I don't have a question. I, I just want to make a comment, and I think we're at that point. Is that right?
Yes.
I, you know, there are some programs, there are some schools out there doing block. There are some schools that are using, or doing the traditional things that you're trying to move us away from. And, and I, and I, and I say, let's, let's, let's move this experiment from a vision to a hardened educational foundation that becomes our core way of scheduling classes. I don't think we need to be bouncing back and forth. I think that this right here is going to be something, or should be something that we then take forward and continue. I, I just don't want it to be something that withers after a while. So, you know, I hope everybody had a chance to real think about this, because this is how we're going to be educating our students for a long, long time. And it can't just be a fly-by-night or something that disappears after a while, after we've had two or three years of it. You know what I mean? We went through an eight-step process. We had some other stuff in between that, and now we're looking at block schedule for our high school. And I'm just, I'm just, I just hope this, and I think this can go, be something that, that, that will, that will enhance our educational process for a number of different levels. I don't want a kid who comes in and here as a freshman, and then all of a sudden we change in his sophomore year or his junior year, and we're doing something else that's fabulous, you know, that everybody thinks is wonderful. This is something that we've got to really commit ourselves to and, and make it happen for, for kids, for, for kids who are entering, who haven't even gotten here yet, and who will graduate in a commencement, having had very, a lot of, a lot of success. So that's, that's all I wanted to comment on. There's a lot of things that I'm concerned about here, but, you know, I don't think we need to bring it up here. I'd just like to get to the vote.
Right. We're going to do the vote. Ms. Gloria doesn't have her computer, so we won't vote electronically. If you can just state your vote and we'll go.
Would you like me to roll call?
You can.
Rachel?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
LaShawna?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Thank you.
Vote passes unanimously. Good job. Principal Taylor, we're excited. Next, on our agenda, we will be doing item 2.03, the use of school property. At this time, I will entertain a motion, and I will abstain and turn it over to, actually, I'll turn it over to our Vice President, Rachel.
So I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Howard. Is there any discussion on item 2.03? Hearing and seeing none. Terry, can you call the vote?
Ms. Rachel?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Julie?
Aye.
Mr. Kevin?
Aye.
Ms. LaShawna?
Aye.
Ms. Gloria?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
And the motion carries unanimously, and we will move it back over to Ms. Tribblet.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, our meeting is adjourned.